Wells.
Here.
Justice Lawson. Justice Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Here.
President Makabe.
Present. Let's see, I report out on closed session and we had an update on CSCE negotiations and basically staff updated us and we gave some direction. All right, thank you. And let's see. Okay, yeah, so let me just do the welcome. Bienvenidos si necesita interpretación en español por favor busque la información en el chat gracias y bienvenidos. Welcome everyone to the September 1 Redwood City Board Meeting. Thank you for all being here. I'll have, I'll post again in the chat the agenda as well as how to sign up to make comments. And I'll repost these again as more people join. If you would like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc. Be sure to include your name so we know who to unmute when the time comes. Tonight, it looks like you'll be given three minutes to speak and if you need Spanish translation, we will give you more time. And if the item you wish to address is not in the agenda, you will be called under oral communication. If the item is on the agenda, you will be called on when that item is being addressed. And as a reminder, this is a board meeting for board business. The chat feature is open for members of the public to ask board members or staff a clarifying sort of quick question. If you'd like to speak to us though, you're welcome to fill out a speaker's card on the various topics. And as a reminder, because we are meeting virtually, all votes will be by roll call and we are recording the meeting. All right, well, thanks again for being here and we'll go ahead and jump into the agenda. Let's see, any changes to the agenda?
Celia, did you want to pull something?
So I think there's going to be some discussion for some of the items and under action for thirteen point one, thirteen point two and thirteen point three.
So we could move thirteen point four to consent. That's okay with folks. I don't know if anyone had any questions on those. Those are on the the credential candidates. Basically providing internships, that sort of thing. It's a couple of agreements. Okay. And then I think the rest will stay on action. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Mike.
Second.
Maria seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Let's see, Wells.
Aye.
Justice Lawson.
Aye.
Justice Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Aye.
President Makabe.
Aye. All right. I do not think, let me just double check. I don't think we had any oral communication. We didn't as of a few minutes ago.
We do not.
Okay, thank you for looking. That's helpful. All right, and there's no nine or 10 tonight regarding bond activities. I know last meeting we had a whole lot of them. So we're on to discussion items. Discussion on the 2021-22 school year.
Okay, great. Thank you so much and good evening, everyone, and welcome to, this is day 11 for us of being in person at the school sites and there's just a lot of joy and energy going around with having kids in person at school sites. And before I start, just want to definitely thank all the teachers and the staff and the administrators and parents for entrusting us in allowing us to educate their children in person. It's a real treat compared to what we were doing 18 months ago. So tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start out with just where we are with enrollment as of, you know, day 10, which was yesterday. And then what we're going to continue with is some information regarding to a dashboard update that we'd like to share with you. And then some COVID testing updates. And also some FAQs so that we can remind our parents of how our parents and also our community about the contact tracing that we do and the notifications. And then also we're going to talk a little bit about vaccine mandates and then have a discussion. So as we go through the presentation, please feel free, board members, to stop myself or Ms. Kelly at any time to ask us questions. Okay, so let's go on to the next slide, please. So we are going to talk about enrollment and so as we go through these slides, what you're going to see is 10-day count last year and the 10-day count of this school year. And remember, our 10-day, our 10-day count was as of yesterday. And during that time of that 10-day count, that's when we determine how many students are in each of the classrooms at each of the school sites within the Redwood City School District. And so here you see Adelante and you're going to see that out of a lot of our school sites, there are less students than we had previously when we ended the school year in June. And I'll give you that total number. Yes, Alisa?
Yeah, just one question before we get going on this. Will these include the
Independent study, yes.
Yes, so because they're slotted into a school site. So for example, if we look at the 581 that has in-person and
Independent studies.
Independent study. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
And I broke it down last week accordingly by school at what grade levels children were being provided with independent study. And I didn't, but I didn't bring that back again this week. This is just 10, day 10 with those students included. All right, so this is Adelante Selby. Next slide, please. We have Clifford. Here's Clifford. Clifford has a bit, a few more students than they had last year at this time. Next slide. Garfield. Garfield has a few more students also. Henry Ford, a few less. Hoover, also a few less. Kennedy, a few less students. MIT, there are several students less at 288 compared to last year at this time. North Star, a few less. And here when we get to Orion and the Mandarin immersion program, you will see the gray is the Orion alternative. This reddish brown color is the Mandarin immersion program. And you will see that we are having less students. At Roosevelt. Few, fewer students. At Roy Cloud, there are fewer students. And at Taft, there are fewer students. So when you look at these numbers, if you look at, if we go back to the last day we were here in June, the last day we're, next slide, please. I think there's one way. Last day that we were here in June. And this is the 10-day count from 2021 to 2122. But in, at the last day of June, the number of students that we had at that time was 6,596. So you will have, you will notice that it dwindled last school year. And now we are at 6,353. So in talking about why less students and talking to Superintendent McGee a few weeks back when she was meeting with the superintendents that were new to the county, she also alluded to the drop in student enrollment among all school districts within the red, within the San Mateo County and that it has been declining for the last four to five years. Of course, we've seen a decline, but as I have been informed by school sites, when they do the follow-up of why students are not coming, many have the option not to live in the same community where they were working previously and took advantage of that. We have people that have moved up north. We have people that have moved out of the state entirely because of the ability to work remotely. And then we also have people that have left the Bay Area because of the cost of living. So our demographer also notices that as we progress through, moving forward in the years to come, the school district will lose more students. And seems that we may plateau at anywhere from 58 to six, 5,800 to 6,000 students. Moving forward. So this information is also going to be on our website. As you know, every time we have a board meeting, what is done is that the slide presentation is put on the website along with the recording of the meeting. So we'll have this information on our website so that parents can review it also in regard to the enrollment. Any questions regarding enrollment before we can start going into COVID response update? You go ahead and leave, Alisa?
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, one of the questions that came through the chat that I think I've asked about as well is you know, we, do we know how many left for neighboring private schools or our own charter schools? And I think it's on the margins, correct?
Right, right.
I think mostly it's people moving out of the area, but I don't know if we have exact numbers on that. I mean,
And and what parents, they normally do not give us the information of moving to private schools. But we, what we could do is we can check when the records are asked for. And the records that have been asked for from the district office, you will see that the majority of them are going outside of Redwood City and outside the state of California. So that's a good question and let me see if I can get that response from our records department. That's one way of finding out.
Yeah, I mean, I know when I, you know, we've got the, some of the charter school numbers and it doesn't look like they're taking a lot of the students, you know, they've sort of plateaued or if anything, they're losing students like we are.
They're losing, they're losing students also.
Right. And then, you know, keep in mind, private schools, I don't believe we've added a lot of private schools, so they've got sort of the enrollment they have. Because I know in the past when we've looked at it, you know, there are Redwood City students who do choose to go, you know, their parents have them go to private schools, but that's been going on for a long time. So, and I do know sometimes, you know, people who know they're going to send their, their kid to a private school will choose Redwood City over, say, living in Menlo Park or Palo Alto because the housing prices are a little cheaper here. Anyway, but yeah, I mean, I think if you can find that out, that's useful to know because it's, you know, does tell us something. But I, but I think in answer the question, I think it's on the margins. I don't think it's like huge numbers or anything.
Right.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Now we're going to go into COVID response update and Ms. Kelly is going to start off with that presentation. Go ahead, Wendy.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, everybody. And Dr. Baker, if you wouldn't mind, it's hard for me to see the board as I'm presenting, so feel free to interrupt.
I will, I will definitely.
All right, Kyle, next slide. Thank you. So tonight I'm going to be giving you a variety of information as we progress along. We consistently update the board and the public in our board meetings on on changes, minor and major, as we progress along in these new times. So one update, we did hear from a couple of parents and through our county office of ways we can enhance our dashboard. And we're always interested in new ideas and ways that we can help support communication in our community and so forth. And so it was timely to update the COVID dashboard. As you know, we're one of the first districts to put this out on our website back in the early spring, April, or what have you. But we thought it would be better to be able to provide more specific data. So this is a snapshot of what our current COVID dashboard looks like. The title, RCSD COVID Dashboard is actually a live link. So when this presentation is uploaded, the public can click on that or simply go to our website. Big thank you to our Director of Communications, Jorge Quintana, who is updating this. And so what you see here is the same information that we had last week because it was the week of August 23rd. Our dashboard is updated by 5:00 PM on Thursday of each week, so that will be tomorrow. But you can see here how it is broken down between students. We had 11 positive cases of last, as of last week. Nine were stu, were students. We put our total student enrollment there, which we will modify now with John's updated numbers too. And the number of employees identified as of last week and then of course, our number of employees. This new section on the right side, other adults identified, those are partners, the occasional visitor or other community members that may be on campus for a variety of reasons. As you know, we're not encouraging our active volunteerism and visitors as we have in the past, but we're trying, but we recognize people come on campus and we do have partners that we actively work with. So we created this last column of other adults. And so this will be updated each week and the appropriate cases put in the appropriate category. We are choosing not to depict this information by school site. We have some smaller schools and that, that is concerning. In regards to privacy, we're still trying to play close attention to that, but we thought this was a better step forward in our, in our communication regarding the dashboard. Next slide, please, Kyle.
Can I, before we move on from the dashboard, I just had a comment on it. Thank you for breaking it down like this. I think it's good to see that information. I was actually looking at the dashboard, I think it was earlier today and noticed that if you scroll down, it, it still is the data from last year and so the header doesn't actually match. So I don't know if there's a way we can break it out because I think the third column used to be number of cohorts that have gone into quarantine. And so it's a little confusing if you don't know that that was a switch. So I don't know if there's a way that we can have like last year's dashboard and then this year's above it.
Sure, I think that's an easy fix. We can update that.
And Wendy, just to clarify, so I know that we have our own data, right? Because we're doing our own testing, so we get that automatically and that gets inputted here. And then my understanding is you're also inputting data when somebody gets tested, whether it's a student or a staff member outside of our testing. Then they would, if they tell us, then we would add it here. And so I could see cases where, because I know there were some questions that came up. Well, why did we find out late, you know, at a particular situation? And I would think that some of that could happen because, you know, we'll get our testing right away, but if somebody waits a few days to let us know, we only know when we know, right? And so, yeah, but this includes all of it, right? Sort of our own testing and what we're told. We just sort of take it on value that that's true, correct?
Yes, that is true. So, and I'll discuss this a little bit later on in the presentation because we have a slide on the updates on student testing. But yes, there is a variety of ways in which students and staff can be tested. Our school locations are one of them. And so, so yes, it's a compilation of that's, that service on sites. But we could have a, a family reach out or an employee reach out and say, I was tested on Saturday with my doctor and here is my positive test. That is a possibility.
And can I just say that these numbers look really good? I mean, you know, I think we're all reading in the paper or hearing from people where they're seeing much higher incidents elsewhere, certainly in the whole United States, but also in California. So I think we're fortunate that these are our numbers right now, so.
Yes, agreed. We're, we're pleased that they are low. But, you know, we are very strict on mask wearing and the latest protocols and that's really important. And we're hoping that that's aiding in this cause, but we recognize that families are and our employees are, have lives outside the school day. And so we're managing as best as we can, but certainly on school sites and at the district office and other work buildings, all of the appropriate protocol and PBE and so forth are in place from the latest guidelines to help, help reduce this number, have it be small. All right, well, let's move on then, Kyle, please. Next slide. So perfect timing. We are discussing here on this slide, the RCSD testing updates. And so last week I mentioned that, as you know, you may have heard in the news that the state is funding tests, student tests, employee tests, community tests. And so we have contracted with Bay PLS, that is the vendor we are using to provide support for specific testing for RCSD employees and students. And we have finalized our schedule and I'm pleased to announce that we have two testing opportunities each week on each campus, including the district office to accommodate employees at the district office facilities, personnel who are not on school sites and the IMC. And then we are continuing in place the Thursday afternoon, all district testing. This is for screening, testing or symptomatic testing or what have you at Kennedy and Hoover. So that will remain. We originally had a start date of October 1st, but we were able to pull that back to about mid-September, possibly the 13th is what we're looking at. And we are also able to utilize these personnel to assist with our mobile response testing. So when there are positive cases in a classroom, we can divert, not even divert, we have a whole mobile team that is moving from site to site as needed to assist with the reactionary potential symptomatic or even asymptomatic testing of a classroom or what have you the very next day or even that afternoon as soon as we know. So I'm thrilled with this result. The, the seven personnel are going to be very helpful. It includes a coordinator that will assist our our COVID team at the district office to be able to get communication out right away to families and employees. And really field all the questions that people have. You know, there's a lot of questions that come with each situation as people progress and learn what to do next when there is a positive student or potentially a staff member. And I do have bad news. I'm sorry to be the messenger. Don't shoot the messenger on this one, but we did learn from Bay PLS, which, who, who let us know in a recent meeting. And we did learn through our county that there is now a nationwide shortage of rapid antigen tests. I don't want to say no surprise. Everyone's trying to order these tests. And as you know, there are two types of tests, the rapid antigen test and the PCR test. And so we are going to utilize whatever test we can. Last spring, we did use PCR tests at most of our schools, except Taft and Henry Ford that used rapid antigen. I'm not thrilled that there is a longer response time that can be frustrating, whereas the rapid antigen, we can get within, results within 15 minutes and then possibly even test again in day three to five after an exposure. However, that is what we are managing right now. So hopefully the rapid antigen tests will be more mass produced and we can move in that direction. So we will have testing, it's just the test may look different. Kyle, next slide. Thank.
I have a quick question on testing. So for a family registers, there are students tested at school on the, during the school day. But do they, do they get tested twice a week or is it just that there's two opportunities per week?
Great question. So there are, there are two types of testing situations. One is a screening test where I say, you know, I'd like to know whether I may have COVID. So I'm going to go and have a screening test. And we have offered those on Mondays and Thursdays at Kennedy and Hoover thus far. And then, and so moving forward, Kyle, can you go back to that, that previous slide, please? As of mid-September, we will be offering that at every single site. The second way to test is when there is a positive case in the class or there are symptomatic people that need to be tested. Those are the two opportunities. However, for students, we must have their parent register the student online and agree that they will be tested. So the schools made a big push at May's Day before the beginning of the year. Mr. Perez sent out information as well to families. Not so much to commit to testing at the beginning of the year, although that would have been lovely, but even throughout the year in case there's a symptomatic situation or a reactionary case in the classroom. So we must have that parent permission essentially to test. Did that answer your question, Mike?
So, yeah, thanks.
Okay.
And then can I ask a question regarding testing? Is this testing for Redwood City School District students? Does this include any of the charter students?
So the charter schools are contracting with their own vendor. So this information on this slide is specifically to our 12 school sites and our other Redwood City School District personnel in IMC facilities and the district office.
Thank you.
Okay, Kyle, next slide, please. So we wanted to present just a couple of FAQ bits of information. There's, in, in the course of tracking and tracing, Erin Caicos and HR and Antonio Perez, our Director of Student Services, field various questions and there's this, I know change is hard for everybody, but we are following the San Mateo County pandemic framework as we always have, Cal OSHA, et cetera, CDPH. And the, the information has changed from the spring as it, as it has now for the fall. And so in the spring, when there was a positive case, the entire class pivoted to distance learning. And then, and thus the entire class was notified that they'd have to switch to distance learning and that was the protocol at the time. So flash forward a few months, the pandemic framework changed. The latest addition is August 23rd. And what we do now, when there is a positive case, is different than what we did in the spring. And this isn't an RCSD policy. This is truly following the framework. So if anyone wanted to pull up the San Mateo County pandemic framework, it's very clear to read. I highly recommend reading it. We do that often. But right now what we do is we notify those that need to be notified in a different way. So we have the positive case, let's say hypothetically in a class. And there's outreach to that family, of course. That's how we find out and guidance given. Then there's another notification, which is deemed to be close contacts. And this is part of the tracking and tracing procedures, which can be quite time consuming. It's determining by discussing with the school staff and depending on the age of the child, the child who was closer than six feet for more than 15 cumulative minutes. And then we address those close contacts in a communication. We have now what's called modified quarantine. And so at the last school board meeting last week, we described what that looked like. And so really, the close contacts, unless they are developing symptoms, have one pathway. They can attend in-person, in-person instruction, but they must test twice a week. So having that system that is going to start mid-September in place is going to be very convenient for families. It's not the only way, but we're offering a service onsite. Families can also go to their medical provider. They can go to the other community resources, which I have later in the slide as well. So regardless, they do need to test twice a week for 10 days. But only close contacts in the class are notified versus the entire class because of the need to communicate this modified quarantine requirement. It's a more in-depth conversation. The other notification that occurs is a school-wide notification. And that is just, once again, an awareness. And that is just a once again, an awareness for families to. You know, pay a little bit more closer attention to their child, potential symptoms, et cetera. So I I just wanted to point this out, we get a few questions and part of that has to do with just the change. But we're taking opportunities to communicate this whenever we can. Questions on this slide?
Yeah, Wendy, so just so. Just to clarify, so if there's a positive case in a classroom. Let's say a first grade, first grade classroom at one of our school sites. There's a positive case. That child, after talking either to the child or the staff and the staff person, I guess it's the staff person. Let's say there's three close contacts who are right around them or in their group. So those three close contacts do this modified quarantine. And will be notified, obviously. And then. The whole school at that school site just gets a notice, by the way, there was a positive case at the school.
Correct.
Okay. And the classroom itself. Won't be identified.
No.
Gotcha, okay.
And and that eat the that letter that goes out to the whole school does say if your child is a close contact, you'll be getting a separate notification.
Great, thank you for the clarification, appreciate that.
Sure. Alright. Kyle, we can move along, thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, there are different opportunities. I know families very much rely on the convenience of testing at a school site, however, it is really, you know, it it takes a village. And it's the village we rely on, so while we do have the opportunity at the school sites, there are other opportunities. And they're listed here, and then, of course, a medical provider if need be, and and that's for symptomatic testing. But these are opportunities where where there can be. I call it proactive screening testing or reactive testing or concerns. That there may have been an exposure, not necessarily verified with a positive case or a close contact. Right, Kyle? Okay, so this is something I wanted to bring up, it's on the horizon. We don't need to make any decisions tonight, but I do want to have a discussion about this because it's percolating. There and and we reached out to our county council, we do look at all of this guidance, but when it comes to something that. Could change our workforce or that requires a lot of scrutiny in terms of policy or procedure changes. I want to try and give you as much advance notice on this, so you may have been hearing in. The news, of course, of vaccination mandates for employees. And so we did do a deep dive in this over the last week. Right now, the only FDA approved vaccination is Pfizer. And we do have about half of our employees that have. Taken the Pfizer vaccination specifically. However, what we're really concerned about on this slide is our unvaccinated employees. So we did send out a self-certification in June and also in August capturing our new hires. And we have about. Seven hundred and ninety-two responses out of eight hundred and ninety employees, so we still are waiting for a hundred and some odd responses. And we are consistently reaching out to make sure people do respond one way or another, whether they have been vaccinated or not. And then those that have been vaccinated know to which vaccination and are sending in their cards, copies of their cards and so forth. However. We are now talking about the beginning stages. Because at some point we will need board input on this. To make these decisions, there is a two terms, a hard mandate and a soft mandate. So with a hard mandate. We are stating to our employees that they must be vaccinated as a condition of our employment, which is our legal right to enforce at this time. For FDA approved vaccinations, at this time is only Pfizer. And so there's the quote here from the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing to this end. And it does speak about requesting a reasonable accommodation for disability and so forth, so I wanted to make sure that this was noted. Then the other option is a soft mandate. And so I put the link here for the California Department of Public Health Order as of August 11th. And this is the practice that we are currently using. Where. Employees are either vaccinated or unvaccinated, if they're not vaccinated, they test at least once a week. We are encouraging twice a week. And the district, of course, continues to provide specialized PPE per Cal OSHA. So the soft mandate is what we have been using this month, actually August. And and of course in July, so. I wanted to just start this conversation tonight and I'm sure it will continue. So with that, I'm gonna have Kyle go to the next slide because I we put some question prompts for us to think about. So when we are thinking about the discussion topics. Oh, seven sixty-two employees, my apologies. I want us to think about. Do we wait to make the decision until all vaccinations are FDA approved, if we're if we want to entertain the hard mandate discussion? Are we willing to reduce our workforce as a result of mandating a vaccination if it comes to that, the employee has to make a choice? When would we notify employees if we wanted to do this? If we choose to mandate as a condition of employment. You know, there's a timeline, the six-week vaccination process for those that then choose to move in that direction. And then for the soft mandate. We are currently, as you know, allowing unvaccinated employees to be at work with the items I just mentioned, the specialized PPE in the in the testing. So is this even a concern of ours? Are we worried about having unvaccinated employees at work? Now, are we able to continue offering testing, I think with our new vendor, that probably is not an issue. Do we have enough enough PPE? Yes, we can do that. Are we concerned that symptomatic unvaccinated employees will need to quarantine for 10 days and not be at work, so that's requires substitutes? Which we're short with, if anyone in the community would like to substitute, please contact my office, we'd love to have you. And then is there a public perception concern about having unvaccinated employees at work? So these were just some starting points for a conversation, I'm sure there are a lot more. Questions to be considered, but we just wanted to start the conversation tonight. So that concludes our slides, Kyle, I think we might leave this up for a moment. In case we need to reference this. Thank you. So I'd like to open this up to the board for discussion on on this particular topic.
I have just a clarifying question on the soft mandate. Number four, it says an unvaccinated person would have to quarantine for 10 days. I was under the impression that vaccinated people. Quarantine for 10 days, but unvaccinated people had to do 14 days. Is that still the case?
Well, we're looking at 10 workdays, excuse me.
So, I mean, I know personally, I believe that we're safer the more people we can get vaccinated. I do understand that there's some people for health reasons who are unable to get vaccinated, I know. You know, we had one of our own beloved employees who, after first vaccination, had a severe reaction. Those been told by their doctor, you know, no. No on the second vaccination, so we know that there are people who have had reactions from other vaccines that are not able to or for other health reasons. So we do know that. But I feel like for our students, for our community, those who can get vaccinated should get vaccinated, so I would lean towards. When we have the illegal ability to require vaccinations for our employees. Except for the health reasons, and it looks like. In the law, it's also saying for religious beliefs. That we do it, I think what's hard right now with Pfizer is if we only have half of our employees with Pfizer. And then. You know, a lot more with the other vaccine. You know, do, are we, would we try to require them to also take the Pfizer, which I don't even know if that's. Health encouraged, you know, probably not, and. So so I think it's a little tricky until at least the other two that, you know, there's three of them, of course, that have been taken by our employees, so. Anyway, that's where I lean, that I would, I would want to lean towards requiring the vaccine within the legal ability that we have to do it. I just think right now it's tricky if it's, you know, we, anyway, it just gets tricky with only having one.
So I think on that point, though. It it doesn't matter. What vaccine our our staff have, it could be Moderna or Johnson and Johnson. And they still qualify as vaccinated, it's just that because Pfizer is now FDA approved, we can mandate. The Pfizer vaccine for those who are still.
Oh, I guess, I guess that's a good point, I'm sorry, I'm not even thinking this through, you're right, so basically, we would then, for those who are unvaccinated, you would just require them to get the Pfizer. That's a good point, thank you, Janet. Yeah.
I'd actually like to hear some input from our community on this, so I know there's not a lot of people in the audience. You know, I I think our vaccination rate in San Mateo County in our in our district is pretty high, significantly higher than most other places in the country. And that's why I would be comfortable with the soft mandate. I'm also not opposed to a hard mandate, and so I think that's why I'd like some more feedback from, you know, a wider range of our community members.
Well, and I think if we want a wider range, we should probably specify that this is a specific agenda item, because it's sort of under the. Broader envelope of this school year where we, you know. If it was agendizes vaccine only, you might have more people. Comment, and I guess I'd be curious from our staff as well, in addition to what Janet said, community members, and then also what. Your recommendation is.
I mean, I guess my my point with this, um, also, I'm I'm just like with Janet, I'm fine with the. Soft mandate, but if it becomes a hard mandate, I'm fine with it too. The way I see it with. The coronavirus is is more deadly than any other, even like we recommend that students get the whooping cough. Vaccine, right, so there's other vaccines that are less, I would say deadly, and we are actually asking for them to be vaccinated. So that would be my. Take on that one.
I just want to say thank you to the audience members who are here, we're getting a lot of feedback in the chat, just from those who are here right now.
And actually, the audience cannot see the chat, but basically. I think they're mostly saying that they would, they would like to see the hard mandate, they would like to see more. More of our employees vaccinated.
And I think the tricky part is that 128 who have not responded yet, we we really need that information from those individuals.
Yeah, I think understanding the the full picture is got to be part of it here, and. You know, the software is part of layers, I think we've always talked about how we have, you know, layers of protection here and the vaccine mandated. Like a mask is is another layer, but even in the soft mandate, there's several layers in there, repetitive testing, masking. And and of course, the regular screening that we have going on there. So I think I think we should understand what would be the effect of a hard mandate, if we were to take that option, I don't see the full picture here. And I I I gotta learn when these slides get put up, so I know that these topics are coming, because when I read the packet over the weekend, it's not there. But I think that. You know, yeah, getting that full picture, I think will really help make this decision.
Yeah, I agree, I think that. I'm okay with the soft mandate. And. Would like to see more of the implications of. You know. Like, for example, you mentioned substitutes. What would that look like and stuff, so. That's where I'm at, but I'm not opposed to the hard mandate, I just need to have more information to know what the full impact will be.
I think that's a good way to put it, is what's the impact of learning, right, I think that's the part of that I'm missing here, is I understand the impact to. I understand in one dimension, but I don't have the full picture of what's the impact to student learning and and how how do we make that trade off, because it's a polarity, there's there's two ends to it and. It's hard to know on which which end would be ending up at.
So this discussion is going to be. A heavy discussion among all 23 superintendents. Because we have asked this to be put on the next agenda. And each of our districts, you know, are are a bit different, but it's. A belief that when the FDA approves the vaccine. Among the 23 of us that it should be a mandate. Now. That being said. We have just heard you come up with. Different types of information that you would need before you would go in that direction. And what I understand the county is hoping for is that the Madera and the Johnson and Johnson. Would also be FDA approved, you know, within the next four to six weeks, so that we as. Districts in San Mateo County can all be going in this manner. Especially the high school districts are very much concerned because of the after-school sports. That students are playing. And in order for those sports to occur and the close proximity to one another. They want to. Not only their employees, but their students to be mandated. Now, we're in a little different category right now because it's just 12 and above. But. That's something also that'll be coming down the pike is in regard to students, especially. When it starts to involve our students who are five years old and above. So I've heard the clarification, the comments, the questions that you've asked. And we will come back to you. At a later board meeting to bring this topic up again, when I have further information from the county office of Ed. And also from the CDPH. As I said, all 23 superintendents are very interested in going forward in mandating. Once the FDA has approved. All three vaccines to move in this direction, and yes, there will need to be. Information sent out to our own employees, we need to gather that additional information from those who have not submitted the survey responses to us. Plus, we would really need to. And we are doing this in 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 the near future, our nurses are checking. With our students that are 12 years old and above, if they have had the vaccine. They're not asking the student, they're asking the parents. So we have asked for that information. And that will be coming to you also at a future board meeting, so there is a lot. To. To have before you really make that determination. But when you make the determination, then we will get our county council involved. So that she can make sure that the language is the appropriate language needed for us to move down that pathway. So it looks, our next board meeting is on the 22nd, I don't believe. We will have the discussion then, there will be more information regard to where the districts are. And going in this manner. But we hope that we will, number one, have started with the information with our own students. About whether they have received the vaccine or not, the number that we we can give you. And also what is happening to those employees of ours who have not responded. Because we do need a response, we need a response.
So so just so I clarify, since I might have muted the. So, so just so I clarify, since I might have muddied the waters with my comments or questions earlier, because we're getting a few comments on this in the chat from some of our employees. It seems to me that with, uh, i- if we add, so right now we have the soft mandate, right? And then if we added a hard mandate, we would not be asking the staff who have already been vaccinated with the other two vaccines to get an additional vaccine. I mean, they've been vaccinated. We know that, you know, we've, we've got the scientific information extra protection they get with that. So I just want to clarify that. I did see that in the chat from some of our staff that no, if you got the Moderna, if you got the Johnson and Johnson, you're, you're fine. You're vaccinated. I mean,
it's the unvaccinated that we're talking about that can get the vaccine.
Right. So the unvaccinated, we now have the legal ability to require, acquire them to take the Pfizer vaccine if we choose to do that. It sounds like we do have the legal ability.
For Pfizer only, for Pfizer only.
Right. For anyone who's unvaccinated. Okay. So I, I just want to say clearly again, that I would be for, you know, I realize we're not going to make a decision tonight. It's not an action item. But assuming that the data comes back that others have asked for, and I do think we need the data, like what does that mean for us? What's the impact for us? Because, you know, if certain number of employees quit, what does that look like? You know, so we do need that information. But from everything I know scientifically, I believe that we ought to get as many people vaccinated as we can. I mean, that's what the, that's what the medical profession says. That's what the scientists say. And so I would be for a hard mandate. So I just want to be very clear about that. So I think the sooner we can gather the information that we've talked about tonight and make that decision. Cause there's going to be a runway for employees that either we're going to require that up or we're going to have to provide accommodations, right? For those that legally meet the requirement for not. Now, this is just my opinion. I, I obviously would need, you know, two more votes from the board, but, um, I do feel strongly about it. So I just want to put that out there. That a- as you think through it and bring it back to us for a decision.
Exactly. And like I said previously, we will need to bring back the additional information that you have asked for this evening, along with information that we have garnered from the county office of ed and also from our own San Mateo County office, not county office, but the health department. As I said, all 23 districts, the superintendent, this is a topic at the top of all of our list when we are meeting. And so we asked to meet with, um, San Mateo County Health, also at our next meeting to come in, along with our attorneys. But as I said, we know, we need to garner the information and the clarity that you asked for, and we will have that.
And Sean, as you start to gather the data also, there may be a lot more of employees who are vaccinated. They just haven't reported it. So that's one of the indicators I'm looking for, like how many employees are we talking about? Where are they? What's the impact to the whole? And maybe also by, um, them knowing that we're considering the hard mandate, maybe they're encouraged to get vaccinated, those that can, because obviously there are some of our students and staff who are not able to, as Elisa said.
Correct. Right. Any other questions or comments, board members?
The only other comment I might make, I think Mike, you kind of alluded to this, and I know I've been thinking about this as well. When we have this particular agenda item, it would be helpful if the slides could be up maybe a day or two ahead of time, just so we have time to think about it and, um, ask questions, you know, sort of get ready for it. Cause I do think this is a pretty big discussion topic and just sort of see it for the first time and respond. It's, it's a lot. And I do know that sometimes information's coming in rapidly, so you only get it a day ahead of time, but, um, that would be helpful.
We will do that, Elisa, and this was
Thank you.
This is just the beginning because in order for this to take place, it's not going to take place within the next four to three, four to five weeks. It's going to take a longer period than that. And as I said, we are definitely having, um, our legal counsel making sure that we have the proper language in place too, when we move forward with the mandate. And so, um, she has been looking, uh, at different aspects of the law. And then she's also been looking at what other states have been, um, providing to their employees and, and taking that information and also synthesizing it and moving forward here in the state of California to see if we can also replicate some of it. So it's not going to happen overnight. So we will definitely put it up on our website. And these topics that you have here before you, these are topics that Wendy and I came up with to start this discussion because we haven't had it before. And it's a discussion that needs to occur with more staff members, our teachers, and also our community. So we will definitely have it out for you at least, you know, on that Monday, so that people can see it, if not prior to that. It, it's a hot topic and, and it's happening throughout the state of California right now. Along with, and we're not, and we're very fortunate, the masking is not, I mean, we're not having any concerns about the masking, which I'm very, very grateful, uh, as you have seen and read, seen on the news or read in social media about what other boards are having to tolerate with, um, masking in the schools. Okay. So I think I know where we need to go. Wendy, do you have any questions? I, I, I wrote all the information down and then we also have the chats. What's really good about the chat is that we can take information that people are asking on the chat and, and also utilize that information as questions to get responses.
So I have a, I have a comment. Um, I know on the chat, somebody mentioned about, um, maybe we should start mandating masks outdoors. Um, is this something that we want to, um, maybe discuss since this is part of the, whether people are vaccinated or not?
So I, just a comment on that, and this is only information I have anecdotally. I do have three kids at three different schools. And so I've talked to them separately about, you know, when you go out to recess, do you wear your mask? Do other people wear their masks? And all three of them individually have reported that at their schools, nobody takes their mask off outside. They only take them off to eat. So I suspect that's probably happening around the district. So I, you know, I don't know. The, the framework allows for them to be unmasked outdoors. So, you know, that's something to consider, but, um, it does sound like a lot of students are keeping their masks on.
So Janet, to that point, we did notify administrators that and essentially quoted the San Mateo pandemic framework that said masks were optional outside. I mean, certainly the eating and drinking, um, mask breaks, et cetera, would be outside. However, you know, we do all recognize that masks are helpful. So we did have that discussion with the administrators, but we did leave it with it being optional based on the framework.
All right. Thank you for the information that we received from you and also from our members in the community and including, uh, teachers and staff. And so we will come back and, um, as, as I said, we will update our slide and then we'll make sure that the slide gets out there ahead of time and notify the community that this is a discussion we are going to have in regarding the mandating of vaccines. Okay. All right.
Okay. So we're onto the next agenda item?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we've got, I believe, three first readings of different policies. And shall I turn that over to Ms. Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Thank you again to the board policy committee. We had a great meeting, started the kickoff for the year with these board policies. And so as a reminder to the board and to the audience that these board policies do come from CSBA as a draft, either as new, uh, board policies or updated. And so you can see the bold and strike through indications, uh, when there is an updated policy. So for this particular one, 11.2, this is the board policy on civility. And every quarter we receive new board policies that the board will consider. Uh, and so this one, as noted here, really addresses how we're treating each other essentially. Civil behavior, uh, an opportunity for education of students, staff and community members regarding civil behavior. And we do this in many, in many degrees already through our positive behavior intervention system, PBIS, which hopefully everyone knows about and has heard about. It's a program that schools have adopted many years ago and includes incremental information to students about topics such as these and, and it will also come into play to another board policy I'll talk about tonight. So that is one way that it is addressed with students and then with staff through our annual HR trainings. So there's information on this topic as well. So we felt that this board policy would be very appropriate to add, um, in our efforts to have a collaborative work environment. Are there any questions about this particular policy?
And I just checked, there's no comments from the public. Maybe so go on to the next one.
All right. The next board policy is regarding hate motivated behaviors. So it ties a little bit hand in hand with the one we just spoke about, but essentially, this board policy is speaking about the importance of celebrating diversity and ensuring that students are educated and have language about, um, various topics, including hate motivated behavior that's woven in within the PBIS curriculum, um, and other social emotional type learning that occurs. So this particular board policy is an update. And note, noting that, um, when there are complaints and so forth, that they are reported to the district's compliance offer officer, which happens to be myself for staff and Antonio Perez for students. And so that information is found on the complaint form that is also on our website and within our board policy as well. So are there particular questions on this one?
All right. And again, uh, no public comment. All right. So the next one.
Okay. So the next item, um, is regarding, it's an update and the, the, just behind this particular one is about child abuse prevention curriculum and the instructional program. And so these items are really, um, focused on in our sex education curriculum, our puberty talks and so forth. And so that's, that's woven in into those current discussions that are already happening. It also recognizes that we do need to have on student identification cards for our upper grades, the national domestic hotline. And updates information regarding mandated reporters, which all of our staff are and are trained annually on that. So there are, there's various information in here, including also our new law AB1145, which amends the definition of sexual assault in regards to mandated reporter. So this is important to have as an, as an update because we want to make sure that our trainings are up to date and our information is up to date, regardless of it's a board policy, but that's why this is being brought to you tonight. Are there any questions on this particular one?
All right. And, uh, no public comments? All right. Okay. So we're on to consent items. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. All right. So Maria made the motion. Janet seconded it. We'll call vote.
Pussey Wells.
Aye.
Pussey Lawson.
Aye.
Pussey Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Deasilcom.
Aye.
President Macabre.
Aye. All right. We're on to our action items. And I know there were some comments, I think on 13.1, two and three.
So yes, and Andrea Guerin is here to address those comments. And I believe, um, Kyle, if you can make Andrea a panelist, that'd be great. There she is. Hi Andrea. Good evening.
Hello. Hi, everyone.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
So I believe Cecilia had some comments in, in regard to the items that are coming before us tonight. So Cecilia, would you like to, uh, address those?
Give me one moment. Let me just find them on my email. For 13.1, um, my comment, and it was for clarification, um, was that perhaps to specify that the counselor was available for six to eight hours a day if the student needed support. Um, otherwise it sounded like there was 10 to 15, those 10 to 15 students are in counseling for eight to eight hours for one to two days per week. Um, and then there was a children's place, primary intervention program for students impacted by drug and alcohol abuse in their families. It says 10 to 15 students per school ordered through this program, six to eight hours each day. So that was my, um, question for 13.1.
Hi, yeah. I appreciate you pointing that out. Um, sometimes I'm just copying a blurb that I've received from the provider. And in that case, I, I agree, it was confusing. I had, um, suggested a rewrite, which would leave the first sentence, uh, children's place, primary intervention program for students impacted by drug and alcohol abuse in their families. But then changing the second sentence so that it says children's place provides six 50 to 55 minute group counseling sessions for up to 10 students weekly at Hoover, Garfield, Clifford and Ford. And, uh, because that was a lengthy rewrite, they wanted, uh, the suggestion was made to bring it here and, and make, see if that's clear to you, if that, if that's satisfactory.
Just a clarifying comment. Um, so the action item is to approve the agreement, right, between Star Vista and the Redwood City School District. So is the great agreement accurate? And the confusion was in the board memo or is it that the, they're both confusing?
So when Eliana received the information and created the agenda, so it, I believe it's the memo that's not in, in sync with the contract.
Right. So that's my question because we're really, the action item is the agreement, not what's in the board memo. And I know this has come up before because sometimes the board memo, you know, there's something that's not quite right, but the actual contract, the actual agreement is okay. So that's my question is, is it okay for us to go ahead and approve the agreement if the agreement is actually okay?
The only
But if we're revising the agreement, then we obviously cannot approve that because that's a different story.
So the, the, the reason for So the, 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 the reason for. The concern is that with board docs, you know, your memo needs to go along with the agreement. So when. Ellie puts up the, the mem, the, the minutes, there goes the memo, but then it doesn't really. And it's not in sync with the contract.
Right. Because if you, I mean, if you look at the action item, our act finding is to basically approve the agreement, it's not to approve the board memo, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
I mean, you can bring this back and straighten out the board memo, but I just. It, do, do, do you understand what I'm, I'm.
I understand what you mean. It's just because we're with board docs now, we're trying to make sure that everything is really tight. And we've, and we've had these trainings um, several times.
So, so it's just that um, the approval.
Is it Maccabell?
Yeah.
You answer your question. Um, there were no inconsistencies with the contract. So the contract's fine. It does not need to be revised or updated. It's just to make sure that what the memo says coincides with the contract. But the contract in, in itself, it's correct.
And what we're pointing, what we want to avoid is when the minutes go out and they see the memo and they see the agreement. If a community member would come back and say, why did the board approve this? The memo says this, but the agreement says something else.
I think the recommendation is that um. This is just a, we're not going to take action. I think what you were, you, some, yeah, I talked to Eliana earlier today. I think the recommendation is that we will put this item back on the September twenty-second. Meeting and approve it there under consent now that we've had the discussion and you'll. Update the memo so it reflects the agreement.
Correct.
Is that going to interrupt services for the students?
Services, I believe, already started, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. So several of these agreements, they've already started. So this is one of those situations where really we should have approved it before the services started.
Correct. Correct.
I mean, fortunately, all of these groups, we've had ongoing relationships with them. So. I think it was a brand new contract, it would be a different story, but this is sort of an update of yearly work with them.
That's true.
I don't know. What is the rest of the board want to do? I mean, do you want to take action tonight? Do you want to wait until September twenty-second?
I think since the services have started already, it makes sense to just wait and get everything. Accurate and matching so that when it is approved, it, it's correct.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
But Andrea, have the services started? Because I'm getting some mixed messages that they haven't started.
No, it's, it's a, there's one confusing point, which is the actual regular school year services are waiting for actually tonight. Um, where it gets a little confusing is we actually had some summer services that we had offered to bridge between the school years and those services. Um, some of those fell within this fiscal year. And so there's some budget allocation for that to make sure we're covering those. Services, but it's not the formal uh, program. It was really just an additional amount. So that we had coverage for students who needed support through the month of July and the first half of August. But the regular school year program, the one that's the, got all the different school budget line items listed, et cetera, those services have not. Have not started yet. We are expecting to start tomorrow.
Would they need to wait until the?
Would you, would you say, Lisa? I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just asking. So does that mean that we would, I mean, I think Janet, your question is a really good one. Would we be delaying services then until? If we do not approve the agreement tonight? And if so, I would say we ought to approve the agreement because the, I mean, I, I read the agreement and that's what I was going off of. Um, and then maybe we try to rectify the board memo in the future. Um. You know, it, it, at the next meeting or something. I don't know.
Can we capture what Andrea has presented in the minutes? Uh, because the hours in the memo and the hours, the agreement's not more specific than just the number of hours per week either. Or even the budget number line that's being put in there. It doesn't talk about whether it's a fifty-five minute group session or anything in there. So that, is that, would that be comfortable to be able to say and that it's clarified at the meeting in the minutes? This is kind of the services that's going to be offered for, um, so that we can approve the agreement and get those. Services started there. We could do that in the minutes and then we can also um, in the minutes indicate that the memo has been rewritten. And attach the memo.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, that would work for me.
I'm fine with that as well.
Are you okay with that, Cecilia? Yeah. Okay, just.
Okay, good. I think that's a lot cleaner if we start the agreement right away and then services. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve? And then we will make sure that the minutes reflect the changes in the board memo and what we talked about tonight.
I'll move to approve.
Mike. I'll second.
All right. Mike makes a motion. Janet seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Let's see Wells.
Aye.
Let's see Lawson.
Aye.
Let's see Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Silka.
Aye.
President Maccabell.
All right. So around to thirteen point two.
And I believe this is. Similar.
Yeah, it is.
And so, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, for thirteen point two, um. And, and again, I was a bit confused with the rationale written in the contract. Because the contract only stated that the contractor agrees to provide school-based services and there was no explanation after that. So. My comment was, should the contract be more specific and differentiate the school sites? And whether those services are or were already available. And then the other thing was on the rationale. Um, they mentioned Roosevelt and Kennedy, and then they also mentioned Kennedy, Roosevelt and Hoover. So were the services provided for two schools? Was it because was that during the summer? Or was the services are going to or had been provided to three schools?
So here, um, the issue here is that. One of the programs is covered under the school district budget and the other program is actually paid by an outside funder. So, but we're still trying to wrap it all into the same MOU. So it's clear what services in total are being provided. So. I, and we added a school this year, we added Hoover. Um, so anyhow, that was. Simply a matter of just clarifying and making sure that we do in fact have. Um, all three schools being covered by both programs. And so that, that was the addition. It was, it was simply a matter of um, adding the three schools. To the, the rationale, um, so that it. Shows up for each program.
President Maccabell, um, just for reference, the business office revised this contract. And they resubmitted it to me today via email, but I did not upload it to board docs.
Well, then how can we vote on it if we don't know what it is now?
Right, but.
I think we need to put it off until. Some other date. I mean, I don't know, unless there's some minor change.
Trustee Diaz-Silka. I did not email the contract to everyone, so we would not be in violation of the ground law. So um, that's why I spoke to Superintendent Baker and President Maccabell to see if we could be discussed tonight. And we bought as a consent item for September twenty-second.
So. As, as, as Eliana said, it can be brought back on the twenty-second as a consent item because it's on here now, but you do not have. Revised contract, which is what you said, Maria. How can you vote on it? We don't have it. But you, we can discuss what the changes are so that next time on the twenty-second, it's just put on the consent item. It's not an action item.
So I guess the same question that Janet asked last time. Does this mean that services are delayed for students for the next three weeks?
I, I'm assuming so. Is that correct, Andrea?
Uh, yes, services haven't, what we're expecting to start tomorrow. On this one. It was a matter of just putting the schools in. Both places. It, it, the, the actual. Uh, per, contract itself didn't change. It was just, again, that clarification around which school specifically. Um. And places.
I was trying to find the discrepancy now and the board, the memo says three schools and the con, the agreement says three schools. So. What was it? Was there a disparity and it got fixed? Is that what, like that, that's what I'm trying to figure out where the discrepancy is. Because, because the contract lays out, you know, the scope of services, a small group counseling. Um, and counseling for a summer program. And then there's weekly trauma and resilience at Kennedy, Roosevelt and Hoover. And also weekly hours for summer program. Is that the, is that the new one that's attached to board docs? Or is that the one that was always there?
I did not change the contract. Um, and I don't believe that the business office um, too should either.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to find out where the discrepancy is.
I, 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 it's, I believe it was in one place, maybe on the contract, but not in the memo and I, so that that may have been it.
But Mike says.
Oh, I understand. Are we, so.
Go ahead, Lisa. Go.
Well, the agreement that's coming up right now in board docs looks like it was signed by. One Life on August twenty-third. But then I think what I heard. Eliana say is that the agreement has been updated as of yesterday.
I believe it was up today. I received it from the business office today.
So did One Life sign it today or not?
So they signed it on the twenty-third, it seems like.
Right, but we updated it. So what did we change? You know what I'm saying?
I, I also say something. I, I, I believe it. You know, there's a lot of confusion about this one. So I believe the one that was changed by the business office is thirteen point three. But uh, in general, what is the inconsistency there? Is the, which school site receives which kind of service? So I think it was just mentioned like three school sites, but not each one of those school sites receives the same types of service. So that's, uh, that's where I think the confusion is. So for example, the resiliency, that's, that applies to all three. Some. Some of the services does not apply to all three. It's just the specific school sites. I think that's also where the confusion is. But as far as the budget, there's a budget that's set aside for it. I mean, there's sufficient amount for, for the. For, for budget purposes. But it's just, where is the service provided? Which is specific school set? Is it all the same for all the school site? I think that was the issue.
This agreement that's on board docs. This is the standing agreement and it hasn't changed since October twenty-third when it was signed. And when it was put up last Friday. On the agenda, is that correct?
I'm sorry, President Maccabell, were you asking me?
Well, I'm just trying to get clarity because I'm hearing different things. So it sounds to me like Priscilla said, actually, this one thirteen point two. Maybe it's a similar issue as thirteen point one, that there was um, some. Inaccuracies on the board memo, but the actual agreement is accurate. And so again, it's a similar thing that the action item is actually to approve the agreement. And if the agreement from our end, we don't think needs to be changed and it's adequate, and that's what was posted. It seems to me that once again, we could approve this agreement with clarification in the minutes that. The agreement is what everybody, you know, that's the agreement that was out in the public. And what we looked at, i- if, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah. So, so if Andrea confirms that the agreement itself is. Really defines what the services has to be provided, then we can say, yes, then the agreement does not have to be revised. It's correct. Then that's the one that's for approval. But if we're looking at the board memo. If the intent is what is written in the board memo, then the contract may be wrong. So then if Andrea says, oh, no, the, the contract is fine. It's that, it's what we expect for services to be provided. Yeah. So I, then again, we don't have to make revision to that. It would just be the board memo.
Yeah, my, my understanding is the contract was correct and that it was just the board memo didn't specify the three schools. That was my understanding.
Oh, I see all three schools mentioned in the memo and in the contract. And this contract looks like the contracts we usually approve. That have a range of dollar amounts and they don't usually specify exactly what services are at what sites. It's just. This contract is not to exceed this amount of money.
So Andrea, is it Kennedy, Roosevelt and Hoover? Those are the three schools that are receiving the services.
I said, right.
And it's not to exceed the ninety-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, then this one, if, if that's how it stands and that's what's the services are for those three sites. And it's going to start. Uh, okay, the disagreement started uh, at, on seven, one, correct? And because, and that's because of, is that because of summer school?
That's right.
Okay. So seven, seven, one through the end of the school year in June. And it's not going to exceed this amount then. If that's correct and the. And the memo is a bit different, then the board can go ahead and move forward with this.
Right. So the action item would be um, you know, approving the agreement, which is accurate. And which is what was there. Recognizing that the board memo has been updated to reflect the agreement. Is that correct?
The memo, it does reflect the agreement as far as the, the amount that we are agreeing to. It's just more specific. And how that money is going to be spent.
Okay.
And it reflects the three schools. Correct, Janet? I, I'm not on that.
Yeah, yeah.
On that screen.
Yeah, on the ninety-three thousand.
Lisa, one of the panelists has their hand up, their zoom hand up. I don't know if we want to. It's Liz. Is it an accident? No, nothing. Okay. Just making sure. I saw the digital hand go up and I wanted to make sure we recognized it, but that was.
Yeah, I think my cat did that. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Ah, the cat showed up.
Cat has the answer.
Yeah. So I see the agreement looks, it looks like it's aligned on the school sites. It's the agreement is not specific as the board memo is about which services are being offered at each one. But it is specific in terms of the finance, financial ranging and, and covering the summer program and the, the weeks now with the hours. Um, I've moved that we approve the memo that's attached to the board for, to the. Or docs for this item.
So Mike made a motion. Janet seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Let's see Wells.
Aye.
Let's see Lawson.
Aye.
Let's see Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Silka.
Aye.
President Maccabell.
Aye. All right. So we're on to thirteen point three.
This is for PE plus. And the discrepancy, Andrea, was, was there a discrepancy on this one?
No, um, there, there was a question about the, the field where it says rate per. And it's blank. So it's rate per hour, rate per year, and then it said not to exceed. And so in those fields, they're numeric and I had put zeros. Or NA, I can't remember. I put something that didn't um, necessarily, I think trustee Marcus had asked for a change. And I didn't think I was able to make it. So Olivia figured out if we put. and I didn't think I was able to make it. So Olivia figured out if we put the not to exceed has not changed. It was simply the rate per, I think Olivia fixed it to say per, the total amount per year, not to exceed that amount.
So, so she still had, there are still zeros here. I, I see that on the contract and not to exceed the $473,519. So, you're saying that Olivia is changing this portion of the contract not to have zeros here? Is that what I hear you saying?
Or, I have to be honest, I can't remember exactly what the result was, but that was, that, that was the issue. I had put maybe NA. Let me read the email.
This was, again, this was Cecilia's, Cecilia, this was your question that you had, correct?
Yes, it was a zero, not to exceed, yes.
So Priscilla, is this the one that was changed and not uploaded?
I don't think so.
So I think from Andrea's response to my email, 13.2 was, she was going to correct that agreement and send it to the vendor, and because of the Brown Act and because the agenda needed to be sent out 72 hours in advance, that was the reason why we needed to discuss the item or it had to be pulled. So that is the only reason why this discussion is happening.
There was not a change to the contract amount.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, what I was saying earlier is that I think in terms of a presentation, so in the contract itself, if you would look at the dollar amount for the compensation, it says zero to up to $473,000, which seems weird, you know, when we look at it. But Andrea couldn't change it because it's an online form and only takes a number. It cannot, we cannot put NA in that number because a part of this is not really school district, Redwood City School District own cost, but it will be paid from a grant. So, so unless there's any question on that, I think we're all clear about where this contract will be funded.
So then this one could be an action item also to be approved.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Silka.
Hi.
President Mark.
All right. Thank you all. And so, yeah, I guess we've approved it and services can start.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. So we're on, oh, 13.4 was approved under the consent item. So we're on to 13.5.
Thank you. These two resolutions are being brought to you tonight for a reduction of classified services. And one is our clerical support for lack of work and the other is the classified management for lack of work as well. Are there any questions?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, so Maria made a motion. Cecilia seconded it. Roll call vote.
Trustee, trustee Wells. Trustee Lawson.
Hi, I see Mike's off.
I mean, I am, sorry, something disappeared on Zoom, but I.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Silka.
Hi.
President Mark.
All right. Okay, so we're on to a report from board members and superintendent.
Elisa?
Oh.
13.6.
Yeah, sorry, I missed 13.6. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I thought, I thought, I thought I was missing something significant. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Tonight, there's a detailed board memo regarding the additional personnel that is requested to help serve our community schools and our, and clerical supports for our community schools. As you recall, we did add additional community schools this year. So that's included in this particular request. And then other clerical supports offered at the district office to support ed services and then two administrative positions, one to support COVID response and the other is to move to a certificated director of health and wellness. So the board memo outlines also the financial impact in which these budgets are coming from, primarily grants or LCAP approved items. But these are, are not directly affected by the general fund. So it's outlined here on the board memo. Are there any questions regarding this particular need for additional staff?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Janet, and second from Mike. Roll call vote.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President Diaz-Silka.
Hi.
President Mark.
Hi. Okay, so now we're on to report from board members and superintendent. Somebody like to go first?
I don't have any report from last week, so.
I have nothing to report on, so I mean.
I don't have either.
All right, the only thing I wanted to report was on last Thursday, I think I mentioned that we were about to do this, but last Thursday, a group of us did go out and walk around the area of North Star, McKinley, Sequoia High School at the morning drop-off, and it was very chaotic. And we had some city council members there. I was there. We had the principal, Sarah Shackle, along with a school board member, Alan Sarver, from the high school district. We had the principal from Sequoia High School District, along with a couple of his staff, and then Raphael from Redwood City together. So, we were able to document quite a bit and we came up with some photos and a number of hotspots, we thought, from a safety issue. And we put together some suggested items in a spreadsheet and we've shared those with the city. So the good news is that very afternoon, we did have a crossing guard out at Jefferson and Cleveland, where there had not been one, and an agreement that, they've been having trouble staffing that crossing guard position, similar to, you know, lots of organizations and agencies right now are having difficulty staffing. So they've made a commitment to either have a police officer or the crossing guard out there until that light actually gets working. So and the light may not be working until later in September, so that's several weeks away. And then, this, the city manager did report to us today that they're looking at all the other recommendations and they'll be providing responses. And already they've started to implement some additional safety measures around that area, but there's still a lot more to be done. So, I just wanted to let everybody know about that. So the good news is I think our efforts, you know, hopefully are saving lives and that sort of thing, which is really important. And, that's it. Dr. Baker.
There's only one, really, one item, and that was chamber meeting this, this today. And Janet, did you get an agenda? I guess, did they let you know?
It was not on my calendar. I'm sorry, I missed that.
And, and the only reason is because, you know, it was on my calendar from last, last year, so.
I can't tell you whether or not I got an agenda. I'll have to go back.
There was no, I didn't get one either. I, I, I almost didn't go, but then I just, I, I did go. And it was basically about, they introduced the new superintendent at Sequoia High School, the superintendent in San Carlos, and also the interim president for Canata College. And it was a panel discussion. So that's all that, so you really didn't miss a whole lot. The only thing that was very interesting is that from who is it? Mark Berman's office about AB 130, the independent study, how people are really complaining about there were no guidelines and so forth. And so they're trying to come up with guidelines now and more specificity. But we don't need them, as I, as I told, we, we're done. We're done as far as that's concerned. We're already on our way. So, but it was not, you know, a regular, exciting meeting like it's been in the past. It was, so you didn't miss much. That's all for me. But just a big shout out again to the staffs and the teachers and the principals for all the great things that they're doing to get schools up and running and get children in person. It's fantastic.
All right, so then we have information, excuse me, information items on the budgets and LCAPs Were there any questions on those? Priscilla, I wanted to say thank you very, well, on behalf of the whole board, I know we say this often, but thank you so much to you and the budget team. That's a lot of extra work for you to really go through those and, and the memos are really good that you provide us, so thank you. And I did want to say that Priscilla answered a couple of questions that I had on sort of just the process and how it affects us financially. So thank you for that as well.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, any correspondence?
We got some emails from parents.
Yep, so emails from parents. Yeah, okay. Any other business suggested items for future agenda? All right. Changes to the board agenda schedule?
It's just that, remember, there is a meeting on Friday. You all got that information. There's one item on the agenda. That's it. And Ms. Wolf will be there to explain.
Has the attachment been uploaded yet to that? I looked earlier today and I didn't see it.
I have not received it from the business office yet.
But the board memo is there. If I'm mistaken, the board memo is there about what the meeting is about, and we really need to have that meeting so that we can start.
Okay, so hopefully then that can get uploaded sooner than later. Okay, terrific. All right. I think we're at the end of the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, and it's 8:43. So do I have a motion to approve adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody's just in shock. Okay, we have a second from Mike. So, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. Enjoy your gift of time tonight. I'm going to speak. All right, take care. See you next time. Bye.